Welcome to the Bradenton City Council Special Meeting, Tuesday, January 3rd, 2023, at 9:00 a.m. The installation of our three new, two new council people and one repeating. And for the last 10 years, I've had somebody sit on my right and left that won't be there anymore, so I'm gonna, gonna miss him as well. But it's been a great experience going through that. But at this time, I'm gonna ask Pastor Don Steriano to come up and give our invocation from Kingdom Life Christian Church. If we could please stand.
Good morning. Would you bow your heads, please? God of heaven and earth, we begin this momentous ceremony by honoring you, acknowledging, welcoming, and celebrating your glorious presence. We recognize the passing of the torch today in the light of leadership that has been so brightly carried by those who came before the ones who will be sworn in today. We bless them. We bless every part of their life. We bless their new season, declaring Jeremiah 29:11 over them, "For I know the plans I have for you," declares the Lord, "plans to prosper you, not to harm, plans to give you hope and a future." And now, as the torch is about to be passed, I pray the same blessings to be bestowed upon our recommitted new leaders, our recommitted and new leaders, Councilwoman Mary Ann Barnaby, Councilman Josh Kramer, and Councilwoman Lisa Gonzalez-Moore. Heavenly Father, your holy word in Romans, Chapter 13, pronounces that there's no authority except that which you have established, and the authorities that exist have been established by you. It states that the earth is the Lord's and everything in it and the world and all who live in it. So we acknowledge today that you're in charge, but we are humbled that you have chosen men and women to warden heaven's delegated authority on the earth. With that, I pray a portion of the Lord's prayer that your kingdom and your will would be done on earth as it is in heaven, and it would be their guiding light as they govern the friendly city of Bradenton. And I pray this all in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. And please remain standing as the presentation of the colors will be done by our Bradenton Police Department Honor Guard. And we will join them in the pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please be seated. At this time, before we get to the swearing in, I'd like to just welcome everyone. And obviously, for the, for the new council people and, and obviously all of us, this will probably be one of the few meetings that we have a full room where it's all positive. So as, as we look forward, so I'm excited to see that. So, but I would like to, to welcome Mayor Poston, who's here today. Had a long run with the city, obviously a great run, so thank you. I, I think I saw, did I see Carl Callahan?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, there he is, Carl Callahan, which, great city employee, so thank you. Is there anyone else? I didn't see if Mr. Gallo had made it or not. But also, we have Chairman Van Austin Bridge from the County Commission, so welcome. Did I miss anybody else? I don't. Joel Henry's here in the back, so he, he was here at eight o'clock, longtime city employee. So, and then, then obviously, everybody else in the room with our staff that's here. And January 3rd, 2023, going forward is gonna be a great day, as well as for the city. There's a lot of exciting things, and, and we're looking forward to a positive. Another historic council is going to be set. So, you know, when a question got asked to me a couple of years ago, what am I gonna do with three women up here? Now, now we have four, and my, my answer was, they all ran the same as anybody else, and they all have the same hearts for our city. So I will always say that. It's, it's gonna be six great people up here and a great staff working hard for our city. So, welcome everybody, and we appreciate that. And now, I will turn it over to City Administrator Perry.
Thank you, Mayor. Good morning. I'm the Chief Executive Officer for the city, Rob Perry, and the City Administrator. On behalf of all the residents of the city of Bradenton, Mayor Brown, Vice Mayor Coachman, as well as, as Counselor Coker, and our city's administrative team, and over nearly 600 employees, we'd like to welcome everybody this morning to chambers. In starting the installation and swearing in ceremony, what we will be doing is bringing each counselor in up one at a time. At that point, you will come up with your family and your swearing in official affirmation officer that you have selected where you will be sworn in. After that, you will take your seat on the dais. We will begin today's ceremony with Counselor Mary Ann Barnaby from Ward 2.
I, Mary Ann Barnaby. Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
Protect and defend.
Protect and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And of the Flori, and of, and of the state of Florida against all enemies.
And the state of Florida against all enemies.
Domestic and foreign.
Domestic and foreign.
And that I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
Loyalty and allegiance to the same.
Loyalty and allegiance to the same.
And that I am entitled to hold office.
And I am entitled to hold office.
Under the Constitution.
Under the Constitution.
That I will well and faithfully perform.
That I will well and faithfully perform.
All duties of the office of Bradenton City Council Member, Ward 2.
All duties of the office of the Bradenton City Council Member, Ward 2.
On which I am now about to enter.
On which I am now about to enter.
So help me God.
So help me God.
If I could just briefly introduce my, my pastor, Pastor Tammy from Great United Methodist Church, and my family that's here with me today, our son Matthew, our son Christopher, and his wife and our daughter-in-law, Alicia, and my poor husband. My long-suffering husband. Thank you.
Next, we'd like to welcome to the podium Counselor for Ward 3, Assistant Chief, former Assistant Chief, Josh Kramer.
Josh, tell us who's swearing you in.
My wife Maria and the Honorable Judge Heather Gould.
You ready?
I'm ready.
All right. Last chance. Ready? I, Josh Kramer.
I, Josh Kramer.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
Protect and defend.
Protect and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And of the state of Florida.
And of the state of Florida.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Domestic and foreign.
Domestic and foreign.
And that I will bear true.
And that I will be, bear true.
Faith, loyalty, and allegiance.
Faith, loyalty, and allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And that I am entitled.
And that I am entitled.
To hold office.
To hold office.
Under the Constitution.
Under the Constitution.
That I will well and faithfully.
That I will well and faithfully.
Perform all duties.
Perform all duties.
Of the office of Bradenton City Council Member, Ward 3.
Of the office of Bradenton City Council Member, Ward 3.
On which I am now about to enter.
On which I am now about to enter.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
And last but not least, is the latest member of our, our management team. It is Counselor Leck from Ward 4, Lisa Gonzalez-Moore.
Tell us who you got.
Oh, yes, my husband Fred Moore, the Honorable Judge Melissa Gould, all of the children, 19 to nine.
Are you ready?
I'm ready.
Raise your right hand. I, Lisa Gonzalez-Moore, do solemnly swear.
I, Lisa Gonzalez-Moore, do solemnly swear.
That I will support, protect, and defend.
That I will support, protect, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And of the state of Florida.
And of the state of Florida.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Domestic and foreign.
Domestic and foreign.
And that I will bear true faith.
And that I will bear true faith.
Loyalty and allegiance.
Loyalty and allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And that I am entitled to hold office.
And that I am entitled to hold office.
Under the Constitution.
Under the Constitution.
And that I will well and faithfully perform.
And that I will well and faithfully perform.
All duties of the office.
All duties of the office.
Of Bradenton City Council Member, Ward 4.
Of Bradenton City Council Member, Ward 4.
On which I am now about to enter.
On which I am now about to enter.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
I think that's best, that's what we keep. Thank you, everyone, especially to the families and obviously our judges, that, what I understand is they have to go judge now. Thank you, we, we appreciate you. Thank you. At this moment, I am going to call the special meeting of the new Bradenton City Council to order. It's, we have an agenda, but one of my options on the agenda, obviously, is changing the agenda at the time. So, at this moment, I'd like to move number nine up to now, which is recognition of 17 years of service, Councilman Patrick Roth. So if you can come forward. So probably, I know Mrs. Barnaby served a little bit longer with you, but, over the time, but the last part of, the last 10 years, I've served it with you. And like I said, I sat to your left at one point, and then to the right now. And I, you know, there was probably 99.9999% of the time, we agreed and, and worked well on a few things, it's, but that's okay. You can have times, and we've talked about that. And what you did for this city is, is greatly appreciated, and I, you know, you made a statement a little while back, that it was very interesting, that, that we looked at, we said, a lot of times, people don't always know what we're doing or hear what we're doing. But in this last election, I believe the citizens were listening and, and really made some great decisions and, and choices. So that's great to see, that we do have an engaged city. And even though our city is so small, we still are a small town, you know, and people are there. So I just wanted to say thank you, appreciate everything you've done for all the years and through some tough times. You know, you came in, you know, when, as Mr. Callahan said, we were actually cutting into the bone in nine and 10 and all of that. And that was great that you were able to, to be there to help guide us in a positive direction. So just from my standpoint as a councilman, and then as mayor, thank you for all that you've done and, and really appreciate it. And I know you're gonna miss it, we're gonna miss you, but not that much, you're not gonna miss that much at times, but, but today. So we'll let any other council members want to say anything, and then have Mr. Perry say a few words, and then we'll, we'll go from there. So any council members, Ms. Barnaby, I saw those eyebrows.
Mr. Roth, we have always known that the heart of every decision you made was what you truly believed was in the best interest for our citizens and our city. There have been some rough times that we had to go through, but I think we've come out better on the other side. I want to thank you, I want to thank your family. Family served too. Very best wishes with this wonderful future and that beautiful grandson.
Thank you.
Councilman Coker?
Yes. While, while I just had two years on the dais with you, I feel like we have such a history because of working in downtown and the Riverwalk and Realize Bradenton and all the wonderful things that we've done for this community. And I don't know that anyone could realize how much love you've put into your job. And I know you did it for everyone here in the community, but I also know you're doing it for that grandson sitting right there. And as someone who loves my grandbabies, I thank you for all your service, and it's so well appreciated.
Thank you, thank you. Vice Mayor Coachman?
Thank you. Only two years with you on the dais, but they were wonderful, thoughtful, instructional, because you have a ton of history. And I owe you, we all owe you. You can say that you came, you saw, and you conquered. All the best.
Thank you. Do you want to just, a few words, that's your duty?
Sure, I know. I, I didn't have the honor to serve with you, but I, I've had a chance to talk with you, and I appreciate the guidance and the offer for future guidance. I'm positive that you're gonna continue to be an active member of our community and a great example of active citizenry, and I look forward to that. Thank you for your service.
Thank you, Council.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilman Roth, when we met before I announced I was gonna run, you said you just wanted the war to be left in good hands, and I appreciate those words to me. Thank you, I guess, for not running and retiring. But I, I know that day, you also spoke about wanting to retire and spend time with your family, and I hope you enjoy every day you can with them. Thank you again.
Thank you very much. And one of the benefits now to being out there is you can talk to all of us. Tell us anything you want. Before, we couldn't talk because of sunshine, but, but I'm gonna go ahead, Rob, and give our part from the city and council on that, and then you can do. So obviously, it's not much, but it's a little plaque that is something you hang and, and, you know, for the 17 years of service and that, and a little party at that as we go out. But then also, I know you want to keep this, so you can put it somewhere. Both of those, you get to keep.
If you saw my backyard, you'd know that there's a space waiting for that.
Maybe you can just put it on a post and, on street.
On street parking, right. Village of the Arts. All right, Mr. Perry?
Thank you, Mayor. Counsel, we have something special for you as well, but I, I think it's hard to find anybody that has a bad word to say about you. You know, your reputation of 17 years of service, your personal.
You can find them.
You're, you've been a gentleman and a great ambassador for the city, a philosopher, an orator from the dais, and, and a pragmatist, and, and certainly a humorist, as we've seen today as well. I'd like to thank you, your wife, your entire family who I got to know a little bit over the last year and a half for those 17 years, and, and really what you've kind of demonstrated is a stick-to-it-ness through, through tough times and good times, and in honor, integrity, and grace in doing your job. And today's government service, that isn't always the case, so we're so proud to have you and so hopeful for your future. We have a small gift from the administration, and we wanted to outdo the, the mayor and councils plaque, as we always do from the administration. So we put this, this, this plaque together with the city emblem and seal, and it's presented to City Counselor Pat Roth, Ward 3. Thank you for 17 years of service and leadership to our citizen, our city, our citizens, our city and our team. A job well done, January 3rd, 2023. From the administrative staff, Carl Callahan, City Administrator Retired, who you served with for quite some time. I spoke with Mr. Callahan, and he was very, very collegial in asking that he could participate in, in extending this award, as well as myself, as the current administrator, Rob Perry, and Ms. Melton, as the chief clerk for the city. So I want to give this to you with the most heartfelt thanks and appreciation.
And the reason I waited, because I knew that was gonna be a one-person picture. Now we're gonna get a group picture with all of us.
Those two, ain't.
Now, we're gonna do that with him. Go ahead, let Patrick.
Well, I just want to say, you know, thank you, it's, you know, I love democracy and action. Thank you all for, for being willing to serve, you know, if, if, you know, I always, I always tried to remind people when they were, you know, elected official councilmen, I said, I'm a public servant. I serve the public. And, you know, I believe in a, a Jewish carpenter who was a public servant, you know, and that's, that's where I got my, my, my faith from. And anyway, so going forward, you know, I, I, many of you weren't around, when I cut my teeth on the Where's Creek project, which had been 50 years in the making, it ballooned into an, you know, a $50 million project, and, but also, it was seven government agencies all had to sign on board, and none of them wanted to at the time. So I, I, I learned about bureaucracy quickly. And, and quickly following, as Mrs. Barnaby said, you know, we inherited the Great Recession. And I was like, what a, what a raw deal, you know? I had things I wanted to do, and, and all the money's gone. And, but, but actually, it didn't all go away. But, but, and I thought to myself, well, well, who better than me? You know, someone's gotta get us through this. So, you know, I mean, just personally, that was my view on it. And then, you know, and the, the reason I bring these two things up is we, we know we have plans and we want to do things, but the world throws us ringers, you know, and like, like a recession and, and really the zombie properties that haunted us afterwards. That was weird. Who, who could have seen that? And then we got a great, the pandemic, and, you know, and all that followed on that, and economic turmoil. So the point is, we can plan for the future, but be ready, be nimble, be willing to, you know, to do what it takes, because we don't know what the next thing is out there, and you all now have it. I, I welcomely passed the torch. And I do want to, you know, the other thing I've heard too is that, you know, we didn't always agree. I don't think there's ever been a time I've served on this council where we've agreed, you know? It's, there's been, you know, hot debated disagreement, but we call a vote, we live with the, and you accept a vote, and then you move on to the next thing. And that's just been always the way it is. It just isn't personal, it's business. It's, it's all about public service, democracy, and, you know, that's, that's the way, three votes win, and, and, and we go forward. And, and I've always abided by that. So I do want to thank, thank Mr. Perry for coming on board. Mr. Carl, thank you for, for working with you. And, and really, most of all, you know, I want to thank my beautiful daughter and my little grandson there, but my loving wife lived through five election cycles. And that is not fun. And, you know, she's been a real, true, real camper, and I'm very proud of her, I'm very proud of this whole family here. And, and cousin, I'm sorry, my son-in-law Ray is home, bringing home the bacon, their flight got in 2:00 a.m. last night because the, the airlines delayed it, so he's, 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 he's working, he was gonna be here, but plans changed, plans, plans changed. Anyway, thank you all for, for willing to be serving. Good luck, Godspeed, and my prayers are with you.
He's got a walk.
Thank you so much. Thank you, everybody. Thank you for moving the agenda.
Yes, sir, thank you. Thank you, appreciate it. All right, moving forward, and number six on the, is the election of Vice Mayor. And I think this is done, you know, it's been some talk about it over the years, but this is the best meeting to do it at since we're, had the special election, or special meeting. So Chair will entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
At this point in time, per our city charter, the city council must select a Vice Mayor to serve for the following year. And it is my honor to put the name of Jane Coker into the nomination.
Do we have a second?
Mr. Mayor, I second.
All right. Any other nominations? Hearing none, we'll start the vote in, it's gonna be different now because we gotta do it, but Ward 1.
Yes.
2.
Yes.
3.
Yes.
4.
Yes.
5.
I'm still last, yes.
I'm still last. Yes.[600.41][600.41](Laughter)
That's, we rotate. All right, thank you. All right.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody.
Vice Mayor, appreciate it.[607.86][607.86](Applause) All right, and then the next on the agenda is appointment of the CRA Board Chair and Vice Chair. Mr. Rudicell, I know we discussed this, but can you explain why we're doing that in this meeting? We have the option?
It's simply because the statute requires the governing body of the city to appoint the Chair and Vice Chair of the CRA. So, that's why it's before the council.
Okay. So, the Chair will open discussion.
Entertain a motion?
Entertain a motion? Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to appoint Chair of the CRA Josh Kramer, second.
All right. Any further discussion on that? Or any other nominations? Hearing none, we'll start the vote in Ward two?
Yes.
Three?
Uh, yes.[663.61][663.61](Laughter)
Four?
Yes.
Five?
Yes.
One?
Yes.
Carries five to zero. All right, and then for the Vice Chair, Chair will entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to appoint as Vice Chair Councilwoman Mary Ann Barnaby.
Is there a second?
Can I abstain?
No.[695.11][695.11](Laughter)
Second.
All right. A motion and a second for Vice Chair. Is there any other discussion? Any other nominations? Hearing none, we'll start the vote in Ward three?
Yes.
Four?
Yes.
Five?
Yes.
One?
Yes.
And two?
Yes.
Carries five to zero. Thank you very much.[716.06][716.06](Applause) All right, moving on, new business. Mr. Perry?
We have under item eight, Police Department Subgrant for Highway Traffic Safety Fund, Slowdown Stop on Red. There is an agenda memo as well as a copy of the relevant grant documents.
All right, so any questions?
And if Bevan is available, that's a matter. And answer any questions related there, too.
Since I'm aware I'm the next to the last thing standing between a celebration and bagels and cream cheese out there, I'm not asking for money. I'm simply asking the council to approve this grant. The reason it was put on the agenda for today is the sooner we can get this $45,000, the sooner we can buy equipment, put our officers out there on overtime, enforcing our traffic laws and saving lives. So, I'm seeking approval for this.
Mr. Mayor, I'm happy to move for approval of this request before us with the subgrant for the Highway Traffic Safety Funds as presented.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll start the vote in Ward four?
Yes.
Five?
Yes.
One?
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
Three?
Yes.
Carries unanimously. Thank you. Mr. Perry?
Next item of business, Mayor, is the approval of an interlocal government agreement with Manatee County for temporary right-of-way maintenance. In short, what this does is currently the city has an agreement with Florida Department of Transportation to perform median maintenance, and this transfers that responsibility with accompanying funding from the city to the county, who's agreed to accept that responsibility. You may have seen some of those improvements out by the causeway. They look very nice. They have been well installed, maintained, and we're looking forward to our partnership with the county to beautify and improve that important city thoroughfare and major arterial.
Right. And one of the things that kind of started a couple of years ago, kind of looking at some of the interlocal agreements and the way that our medians and the way our city looks, as well as the county, and Chairman Van Austinbridge is here today, and he's been spearheaded that on the county side. And it's one of the things that I think we need to do as a city-county working together. We don't need to have two or three groups out there kind of competing and not doing a great job. Let's have one group doing it perfectly. And I think if you drive down 34th Street south of 53rd Avenue in the county, if you drive 75th Street, if you drive on 53rd, the county has implemented this probably within the last year plus, and you can really tell a difference. The biggest thing that I think this will do is not only, it looks great when they do it, but how does it look in two months, four months, six months, eight months? And that's what this agreement does, is it continues that. Because again, most of our roads that are the major roads are state roads or county roads, but they're in the city. So, let's keep them going and looking good. Because if we're going to, and I've said this quite a bit, if we are going to code enforcement our residents, we should also code enforcement ourself to make us look good. And that's something that I think we need to keep working on. And a wise man once told me, "We can't be Disney, but we can be Disney-esque." And that's what we want to try to be, to the point of, you know, how our city looks. So, that's why I thought this was important. Jim's done a great job with his staff and working with the county staff to keep this moving forward, as well as our staff can work on other things instead of trying to maintain that or do it. But that's what I've got. Any other questions? Or Chair will entertain a motion?
I make a motion to approve the interlocal agreement with Manatee County for temporary right-of-way maintenance, second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none, we'll start the vote in Ward five?
Yes.
One?
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
Three?
Yes.
Four?
Yes.
Carries five to zero. Thank you. Mr. Perry?
Mayor, the last matter of new business is a request for a motion for approval of a downtown maintenance initiative. If I may approach the dais.
We don't have...
Yeah, wait till you get there.
Stay put.
We don't have a memorandum on this within the package. I would incorporate by reference the memorandum that I dispatched to council on December 20, 2022. I have had the opportunity to speak with each and every councilor about this initiative. What it is, in short, is a series of downtown Main Street and Riverwalk improvements for beautification, general maintenance, and specific maintenance. There's a number of categories. The Rossi Park lawn is included in the package. That has already been budgeted for the forever lawn. We have replaced that several times. These initiatives are all through Public Works by and large, and Mr. McClellan and his team have done an excellent job of putting things together and really posturing them before council for approval today. Most of these have been approved within the budget or within budget items, city center, general budget category, and things like that. Really, what we're looking for today is, in some categories, the formal procurement approval, yourself acting as the ultimate procurement authority on behalf of the city. And there's a series of different items. Again, the Rossi Park forever lawn, the traffic safety bollards, which we had all discussed regarding trying to make the downtown corridor and when we do activation events more pedestrian-friendly and safe. We'd hate to have an incident where an individual was able to penetrate that corridor, which is a pedestrian walkway for the better part of the public market, New Year's Eve, and things like that. And so, we had asked Public Works to look at the technical aspects of installing and maintaining and operating that bollard safety program, which they did. And that is funded with half-cent sales tax fund, and it's approximately $86,000. And so, comes out of the paving program specifically. City center garage, interesting issue there, which is basically, it's a precast concrete panel garage. It's the premier type of vertical construction these days. A garage does something that most buildings doesn't. It shakes a great deal. And so, the tolerance between those panels sometimes will be compromised. There's a system, and this is probably too much information, of flanges and caulking and sealing. Because of the shaking in that garage, we have to revisit that and do some improvements to prevent leaking. It's preventative maintenance. What we have been able to do is get an estimated cost. We've done an engineering study, excellent by Mr. McClellan and his team, a course of engineers at Public Works, and who else bought in, external engineers with specialty in these types of garages, who have recommended these improvements. The estimated cost of the improvements is $110,000. There is warranty issues that we've talked with the project manager on that is willing to do cost share. We don't know exactly what that'll be. We're hoping along the lines of 50/50 thereabouts. And so, that 110 is the upper end of that particular cost associated with those preventive maintenance repairs. From thereafter, there will have to be continuous preventive maintenance, but not at this level. We think this will solve the better part of the problem, at least for what we estimate to be about a three-to-five-year lifespan for the improvements, is what we're told by most of the folks that deal with that type of construction and structural issues. Main Street concrete sidewalks surround, deep clean. You've gone up our flatwork, which is composed of decorative concrete, different types of layovers and things like that. There is a lot of different types of contaminants and debris and markings on it. We want it to look good. I think you use the term Disney-esque. When you go down Main Street, we want it to look as a first high-quality downtown area. And in order to do that, we have, again, maintenance issues. We have bought folks out, this particular contractor that gave us the proposal, and he did a demonstration for us. He was able to get up a lot of those markings. They're gonna basically do specialized type of washing of the flatwork concrete surfaces, and then a sealant, actually, a color actuator to bring back some of that color and eventually a sealant to it as well to protect it. After that, we will be maintaining it internally with Public Works staff that Jim has done a great job of putting together additional, what's called the Downtown Action Team, which will consist of four people that have to get out there basically at 4:00 to 6:00 a.m. before traffic arrives and keep up the maintenance on that. Downtown's road striping as well to make the roads look a little bit better, as well as the Barracata Live Vegetative Landscape Project. There's grass, there's different types of vegetative landscapes, there's trees and the like. And we basically think it would cost about $40,000 to do upgraded steroid injections, proper fertilization, chemical treatments, basically, over a period of time to keep our greenery looking green. We are the Tree City, as we know. Lastly, there's the parking garage signage, and this is an item that we had been talking about that I don't think it will fit on Elmo.
We can try.
We can try? Okay. Let's do this. I'd like the public to see it, actually. Yeah, it actually does fit pretty well. That, I believe, is a, the size dimension is six feet by 12 feet. It'll be visible pretty much from all the way down to O'Brix. It's an outdoor electronics-type screen that you'd see in sports stadiums and the like. It's a specialty type of product. It isn't like the big screen you'd put on your, you know, your wall outside or on your patio or anything like that. I'm told you can throw a baseball at it and it wouldn't hurt it, which is good. And it comes with warranty and the like. We are asking for approval of this. The funding for this is approximately, I believe, $60,000, and it is included within the city center budget as well. And the issue with it is we need a procurement. In order to do a procurement like this, we would be talking about probably a good deal of time. It's a sole-source product that we want. This particular product in and of itself alone, this is the same company that installed the product at Manatee High School, Venice High School, and the like. They've had good experiences with that. The cost of the product has come down substantially. This is about $60,000 installed with warranty. Whereas, I think when Manatee High did it, I think Mayor told me that the foundation that put that in was in the hundreds of thousands of dollars, several hundreds of thousands of dollars. So, we think this fits as an activation for downtown. What we would use this for is dynamic types of presentations. If you remember, when Channel 10 did the Good Morning from Bradenton series, they did 12 different pieces on all the interesting things and people in Bradenton and the like. Wouldn't it be nice to see that two- or three-minute program as we're walking through public market on a Saturday morning and feature other people and things and places and the great history? And it's a great communicative medium of digital world. So, that's what we're looking at. If we had to go through the procurement process, we would miss the entire season, basically, and probably be at the end of the summer. It will only be in dynamic mode, and we will have an operating manual for this, when the bollard's in place, because there is issues regarding digital signage and traffic safety and the like. And generally speaking, I did some research. I found that National Traffic Safety Institute, NITSA, did a study of 433 different studies that are out there on digital billboards. And they came up with a lot of information, but it was fairly de minimis in their contributions to traffic accidents at high speed. Of course, the corridor we're talking about is a low-speed corridor, but to do it one better, only make it in dynamic mode when it is blocked off and only for pedestrian traffic. What that allows you with is a digital signboard otherwise that is regulated to FDOT standards, which basically you would say, you know, parking, proceed to Third Street, and arrows, and we can put messages up there. You don't want the message to change under the FDOT standard. I think it's every 30 seconds, maybe 20, and the like. But it provides, again, a great communicative opportunity to show ourselves as a leader in downtown activation. And that's my story, and I'm sticking to it.
And I think, yeah, I think one of the positive things, too, is it also will help activate the retail even more underneath there to really get people going. And I think, as you've seen over the last couple of years, the events downtown are starting to grow, obviously. They had slowed a little bit before COVID, but then with COVID, it kind of stopped everything. And it's gonna be, why are we different? And I think you saw that with Realized Bradenton. We had a 30-minute presentation on, with Allison Walker, that's showed a couple of times with Karen in that. And all day, New Year's Day, our phone was blowing up saying, "Great for the city of Bradenton," from people watching that. And so, those are the type of things we can show at times and get on it. And I think it's really, it's from the standpoint of, why do we want to have more events downtown? What's gonna make it better? What's gonna do it? And, you know, the forever lawn you talked about, you know, we saw how we were, right now, the sod needs replaced if we did, needed to do it. And on Rossi Park and with the forever lawn, you could have an event every weekend if we wanted, and it wouldn't affect it. Plus, talking to Dave Tomasco of Sarasota Bay, you know, they looked at it from the standpoint of environmentally friendly and have found that those are coming out where they're more, a little bit more environmentally friendly, because we're not fertilizing, we're not watering, you're not doing all of it. So, it is helping. So, just overall, I think it's, you know, a great presentation, and we can go with it. So, any questions from the council?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
I, we've already talked about this, and I think all the beautification and the maintenance initiatives are completely appropriate. I support the electronic signage because it's a vehicle for more communication with the citizens. I love, you know, the continued revitalization of downtown, and I think that's important and will be helpful. I also understand that this has been budgeted and that it is not detracting from any other parking initiative or project, and so I support that as well. To the extent that it speaks to aesthetics in downtown, I would like to make the suggestion that we consider discussing this particular initiative at the next council meeting, because this is the first potentially that the public is hearing about it. And would we like to give them the opportunity to reach out to us or publicly comment at the next meeting, to the extent that they would like to comment about the aesthetic of the electronic signage?
Mr. Perry, you have any comment?
The only thing I can say to that is that I think it's, when I go to public market or I go to New Year's Eve, there's a lot of people out there, and they're engaged. I think that the pluses outweigh the minuses by tenfold. I think we're trying to establish a modern city, capitalize on our superpower, which is the downtown Riverwalk with all the other great places. I think we can take it out to the public. But I think if we start looking at taking projects like this out to the public, it becomes a very protracted process that can lead to a certain degree of delay and paralysis. And that's a policy decision you can make. This is a fairly, I mean, Orlando has one, St. Pete has one, and the like. This is what downtowns do, and that's all I can leave it at.
Yeah, I know. My wife and I were driving through Orlando a week ago, and we found three of them in their downtown. And one of them was a private business, but the other two were city things, and it was good to see. So, Ms. Coker?
Yeah, I think, you know, we've all been here for so long that we forget how, we know where everything is, but I would like to see us have more wayfinding, and I think anything that's gonna help promote, hey, next weekend, we're having this, you know, the regattas next weekend, and people who are down there this weekend are gonna say, oh, wow. And so, I like the idea. I'm not saying I'm not all for getting the public involved in all this, but on this item, I'm prepared to support it, so.
Is that a motion?
And I would be requesting a motion, an omnibus motion, which would approve by incorporation by reference, the, all of the initiatives that are included in the memo, basically, and I would provide it to the clerk.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it for discussion. I know Ms. Coachman has something she wants to say.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, Ms. Coachman.
Thank you. All the reasons, the pros, and haven't heard very many cons, because it really is, it would benefit the city greatly, my concern is, I know we talked about, the high schools have put signs like this up, this sign will be quite vulnerable, and it's not going to be up very high, so, any studies on it being able to withstand more than a baseball?
It will not be reachable.
Yeah, it wouldn't be reachable, that's a pretty good question, I don't know, right, what the tolerances are for different types of vandalism or interference or missile attacks or anything like that, but I think it's fairly elevated so that at least it can't be, as Mayor pointed out, reachable.
Yeah, they won't, nobody will be able to reach it, and you'll be able to throw anything at it, which you can throw, anything at the windows, you can throw it.
And also just point out that the area is under video surveillance by BPD. Yeah, right.
We'll catch them, hopefully.
Right, yeah.
Well, okay, I just, just the maintenance part of it, you know, if that's budgeted as well, because that could get pretty expensive, I'm watching the money.
Yes ma'am.
Oh, no, I was worried, I was wondering if Councilman Kramer wanted to weigh in.
Yeah, when we met and it was discussed, I thought it was a great idea, are there speakers, I don't remember, are there speakers associated with where you were talking about, if they replayed the Channel 10 video?
Right, we will have to put in an audio system and regulate the audio to an acceptable level, we talked about things like the lightning games and, you know, having special events at that, watch parties, whatever it might be, it's virtually endless, the functionality of it, but we have to be sensitive, obviously, and the operations manual will address those.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or discussion? All right, hearing none, we have a vote to approve the memorandum of Mr. Perry, we'll start the vote in Ward One.
Yes.
Two.
Yes.
Three.
Yes.
Four.
Yes.
Five.
Yes.
Carries unanimously, thank you.
Nothing further, Mayor, Council, under new business, thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, any closing comments by Council?
I think, I think we all want to say something, Mr. Mayor, if you don't mind.
All right, we'll start in Ward One then.
Oh, I don't have anything.
Ward Two.
I would just like to thank everyone, I'd like to thank the citizens that have put their faith in me, I would like to thank all of the campaign volunteers that came out, and there was many Saturdays and Sundays where it was over 100 degrees and you're going door-to-door, and I would get home and would have like salt encrusted on my arms from sweating so much, and I know that, that everyone that was out there walking with me kind of had the same experience, serving is an honor, and serving in your hometown is a special privilege, so thank you to my family, you're one of the major reasons I chose to do this, and I can't do it without your support, I love you and thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Barnaby. Councilwoman Moore.
I would just like to tell everyone, including my family, but also the citizens of the city of Bradenton, that it does not escape my attention, and I think about it frequently, that you've put confidence in me, and I don't take it lightly, and I commit to you that I will do my very best and that I will work as hard as I possibly can to make sure that we are all, you know, looking forward to making a bright and vibrant future for the city that we all call home, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Kramer, that's going to get.
You only got to say it once.
Councilman Kramer.
I appreciate the opportunity to speak, I had a speech prepared, I'm not going to give that in deference to Ms. Moore, who did not have one prepared, I'm kidding, what I was going to speak about is partnerships, and my first zone partner, is sitting right out there in the audience, it's Valerie, then Robinson, now Knight, she was a young woman then, she's a young woman now, but we were zone partners and we had to trust each other, I now have new partners, not only us Council members, but also all the cities, all the employees in the city, we need to remember who's, who we're all working for, but also who we're working with, and I think we need to make sure that they have a safe, fun place to work, that they're paying a competitive wage that is going to make them want to stay, like many of us in the police department have over these years, and I think if we can all work together to get that done, the city has a very bright future, I also have to thank my wife Maria, because without her, I am not sitting here, thank you, my darling, I love you.
Councilwoman Coachman?
Absolutely. First of all, just thank you all for being here, especially the families that have put up with these guys running, because I know how that feels, I just want to say I gladly pass the torch to Vice Mayor, to Councilwoman Vice Mayor Jane Coker, and this is a historic council, it has been, seemed like every cycle now, every election cycle that is, we've been making history, and we're making it again, and all I can just say is, we're ready, let's roll.
Thank you. Well, as I said when we started, you know, we're going to look forward, we're not looking backwards, we're going to work together, we are going to have some times when we don't always agree on everything, but we can be cordial, and unfortunately, that hasn't always been the cause in the past, but we're going to forget that as much as we can and move forward with the great, everyone up here has a heart for our city, and we're going to work together, and everyone out there obviously has a heart for our city, so, and I just want to thank all of our police officers, don't know why they're here today, I've never been to this many swearing-in where there was this many officers here, deputy chief, ex, so, we thank you for what you do every day, obviously, and go through, and then thank all of our staff, because we saw that through the holidays and through the things that, whether it's in Public Works planning, all the way around, so, we appreciate all that everybody does and look forward to a positive and productive 2023, moving into this year, so, what I'm going to do is bring Pastor Don Steriano up to give a closing prayer, but I am going to adjourn the meeting first, so we can, we'll be adjourned, and we'll bring you up to do the closing.
Listening to the heart of so many good leaders that love this city, how you have highlighted cities throughout the ages to do great things, and I believe in this age, in this century, in this year, Bradenton is one of them, so I bless not just those that were sworn in or re-sworn in, but all that have chosen to serve the friendly city of Bradenton, I pray that they would be filled with the abundance of wisdom and discernment, that they would be fueled by your divine love, with joy that overflows, peace that subdues, patience that endures, kindness that reacts, faith that prevails, gentleness of heart, strength of spirit, and a life filled with virtue, that they would serve with the heart of a king, and they would rule with the heart of a servant, knowing when to be the lion and when to be as a lamb, I pray that they would walk in unity when finding themselves on the roads of diversity, honor during disagreement, compassion during conflict, and a peace that surpasses understanding when they find themselves under pressure. By faith and declaration I release over them all, Isaiah 54, verse 17, that no weapon against you shall prosper, and every tongue which rises against you in judgment shall be condemned, for this is the heritage of the servants of the Lord, and their righteousness is from me, says the Lord, I pray that they would deeply know their true identity, and it's not what they do or the title they have, but they're all sons and daughters of the perfect heavenly Father, and their perfectly love, so may the Lord bless you, keep you, cause his face to shine upon you, be gracious to you, may the Lord lift up his countenance upon you and give you peace, in the name of the Father, and of Jesus the Son, and of the Holy Spirit, amen.
Thank you, and celebration out in the lobby area out there? Picture, yeah, we'll get, we'll get the Council pictures, and then, yep, yep, and then, but will everybody walk, go out to the lobby, and Mr. Callahan, would you lead them out that way?